Time you got?
Yes, sir, we have six thirty, and if you'd like me to call the roll.
Call, call, call a roll, let's go.
Yes, sir, uh, Mayor Owens.
Here.
Mayor Protem Selby.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Yeah.
Commissioner Borland.
Here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
And Commissioner Burke.
Here.
Alright, go full group, go ahead.
Yes, sir, you have.
Alright. We'll, uh, open with a moment of silent meditation, if you will, please. Alright, let's have a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States.
America.
To the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every for all. Alright, uh, we've got to have the, a motion for consent agenda, don't we, James?
Yes, sir, we'll see adoption of the agenda, and we require a motion, second, and a vote, sir.
Alright, uh, can we have a motion to, uh, uh, adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
I got a bad connection, y'all bear with me, uh, is that Betty?
Yes.
Alright, is there a second to Betty's motion?
I second, Eddie.
Alright, okay, uh, second, uh, by Eddie, uh. All in favor, say aye, take a roll call, I guess you have to, James.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mayor Protem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
I'm sorry.
Uh, Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Oh, oh, aye.
You get Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
Uh.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, you've got a unanimous mo- uh, unanimous approval, sir.
Okay, we have approved adoption of the agenda, we have, now we have to have a motion on the consent agenda, A and B.
This is Darryl, I motion to, uh, uh, consent, this, uh, consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
This is Richie, I'll second.
I'll second, this is.
Okay, uh, Darryl made the, uh, motion to, uh, agree to the consent agenda, was that seconded by Betty?
Richie doesn't.
It was Christine.
Oh, Christine, I'm sorry, Christine, I've got, like I said, I got a bad connection.
I, I know.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the consent ag- agenda, A and B, uh, take a roll call, James.
Yes, sir, Mayor Protem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
Uh.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
So, Mr. Mayor, you have unanimous, uh, consent there.
Alright, we have approval of consent agenda, uh, time for public comment period, go ahead, James.
Yes, sir, uh, this is, this agenda item is for information, members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions, or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the Board as a whole, and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person, or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself and your location, so that your statements can be recorded. Now, in this current hybrid environment, Mr. Mayor, we're going to go ahead and take members who are present in the, our socially-distanced audience right now, and then we'll go online to see if we have anybody who'd like to comment as well. But we'll start with our folks here in the audience, if anybody would like to make a public comment, please approach the podium, and the microphone is on.
Hi, my name is Melissa Bender, and, um, I'm not one to speak to the public, so pardon me. Um, I live at seven one six North George Howe Street, um, just outside the town limits of Manio. I am directly across from the house that they're hoping to get a conditional use permit to put six additional apartment-type units on to that building, um, directly across the street from me. I'm here to address kind of the residential side of the street, um, I know that someone else here is to kind of hear for some of the businesses. We're all concerned about the stormwater, um, which someone else will be talking about shortly. I'm also concerned, as a homeowner on that side, about the value of my property, having apartments directly across the street from me. Um, it is written in there for teachers, which I am a teacher, um, but housing for teachers and students, college students. Um, I'm concerned how many college kids we might have in these apartments, the only access to that property is from our side of the street, there's no Main Street thoroughfare like some of those other buildings have. So, all of that additional traffic would be using our street of North George Howe. Um, street's very narrow, it can barely hold the traffic that it has now, um, street is not very well-maintained, we've been paved on Burnside, but our street has not been paved. We have, um, dumpsters from all of those businesses lined up on that side of the street. Um, I'm concerned that directly across from me, I'm gonna have another dumpster that gets dumped at four AM. Um, I feel like that's going to be a detriment to the value of my property. So, I felt like I needed to take a moment and follow up, I attended the zoning board or the planning board meeting, where they recommended that it be denied, and I still feel like I need to follow through. And I don't want to say that I don't think he should develop that property, I think everyone has a right to develop their property, but I think that three times the density is a little much. Um, and that it needs to be certainly evaluated to be smaller and more accommodating to the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, James.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have another, another member of the, of the audience here, uh, coming on up.
Hi, my name is, uh, Philip Spinella, and, uh, my business is Ron and Phil's Body Shop, and we're at seven ten Highway sixty-four. And my property goes actually from sixty-four back to George Howe Street, both sides, both ends. And, uh, we have a serious water problem, uh, drainage, water comes right off the highway, right through my parking lot, and then goes out the back. Uh, so, we're real concerned about water, I've had several flood claims now, um, we're concerned what, where the water, where the stormwater's gonna go. It's gonna come off that roof, it's gonna go on to some sort of parking lot, whether it be paved, or pavers, or, and it's gonna go into a dish that's already marginal, and it's not getting any better. It, it's, it's getting worse, uh, the water backs up, the road goes underwater, uh, Melissa, she drives a small car, uh, and she would have to drive through maybe at sometimes a foot and a half of water to get to her driveway now. So, i- it's not gonna get better with all the stormwater, we have problems, and, and Manio is aware, you know that. So, with that. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'll look to the other members of the audience here first, if there's any males who'd like, who'd like to get up and speak. Alright, so, I'm going to go ahead and look up at the screen here, um, our IT head is, um, facilitating the meeting, and we're looking at attendees here. Uh, right now, we have one attendee on the line, um, but, um, I will tell our attendee on the line, if you'd like to speak in public comment, please hit star nine on your phone, and that will raise your hand virtually, and we will recognize you by the last four digits of your cell phone number. If our caller at home wants to speak up, it would be star nine on your phone, it will raise your hand, and we're happy to recognize you, should you choose to speak. Uh, Mr. Mayor, it looks like, uh, we're, uh, we don't have any more folks raising their hand for public comment, sir.
Alright, I appreciate the two coming before the Board tonight, expressing their concerns, Ms. Bender and Ron, uh. We'll now close public comment period, move on to new business, James.
Yes, sir, item, item number six A, this is new business, this is for action. We actually have a couple of items going on in this particular case, uh, we have, the first, the first item is an action item for the, for the Board of Commissioners. And after that, we'll have another item related, directly related to this, this is the naming of public property. The town of Manio extends its deepest condolences to the entire McCleese family, uh, upon the passing of Mr. James A. McCleese Senior. Mr. McCleese served this town with dedication and professionalism for over three decades, uh, he was, uh, amazing person, he was a pillar of this organization, and his tireless work throughout the community has left a lasting mark. He will visit my family, friends, and colleagues here in Manio and beyond. A proposal has been put forward to name a public property in honor of Mr. McCleese, and this action would require a, uh, a motion, a second, and a vote by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, appropriate signage would be fabricated and installed, and budget funds are available to name the Bowser Town Facility in honor of Mr. McCleese. The proposed wording for the sign proposed for this public property would be the James A. McCleese Senior Bowser Town Municipal Complex. We recommend a, approval of, of this honor for Mr. McCleese.
Alright, uh, the Board heard from, uh, town manager, let's hear some comments from Zorn.
Yes, uh, this is.
Uh, this is Darryl. Hello?
Hello?
This is Darryl, uh, I, I talked to, uh, some of his first cousins, and his brother, and some of his other friends, and I, I'd just like to add to the, the wording that you put, uh, uh, James, uh, James A. McCleese Senior by the Town Municipal Complex. Uh, underneath that, I would, I would like to add, um, mobile, the real deal, in quotes.
Alright, I, I don't say anything, that's just a little saying you could put underneath it, but, uh, can we hear from any other Board members?
Yes, I have a question on, this is Richie, where would this sign be, is it gonna be on the fence, or would be about out by the way, would people can see it? Yes, um, um, yes, Commissioner Burke, the proposed sign would be part of the sign at the main entrance to the property, and we could actually make it go from post to post along the bottom, it's like a banner for this property. Okay, thank you, Chris, thank you.
Oh, I don't know if we can do this or not, but since his family is here in the audience, um, but can we get comments on them about the part what their Commissioner Collins suggested?
Betty, you're handling, this is your, uh, question.
Borland, what do y'all think, James? You can go, you can let us know later, or get with Darryl, and let him know how you feel about that.
We, we could do that anytime, an option, uh, just let Darryl handle it, uh, any other com- uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just have, have him ca- uh, call me, or I'll call, I'll call Betty, uh, Betty Carroll, and see what they think about that.
Yeah, a- any other comments? Alright, I think we have a motion before us, don't we, James?
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, who would like to make the motion that we named the new, uh, the old, uh, complex after Mr. McCleese?
I move to name the town-owned public property on by the town road, James A. McCleese Senior Bowser Town Municipal Complex.
Alright, motion by Betty, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, who seconded, I?
Eddie.
Eddie, alright, there's a motion and a second to name the new, the old, uh, town complex, uh, after Mr. McCleese, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, James.
Yes, sir, Mayor Protem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
Uh.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Alright, I seem to have it, the motion cares, uh, James, you'll take care of everything, uh, working with Betty and Darryl.
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we move on then?
Yes, now, there's, uh, the second half of this particular agenda item, it does not require a motion and a second, but this is something they has already, action's already been taken on. So, I'm going to read something, I, I want the, I want the listening public to understand that there is an award, the highest civilian award in the state of North Carolina is the Order of the Long Leaf Pine. Now, there were numerous elected officials and appointed officials in this town who nominated Mr. McCleese for this award. Um, but I don't think any, any, that one of the, one of the most touching tributes came from, uh, our mayor, and this is a letter to Governor Roy Cooper from Mayor Owens. Uh, Dear Governor Cooper, I am writing to recommend the Town of Manio Public Works Director, James McCleese, who is retiring, with my highest recommendation possible for the Order of the Long Leaf Pine. Mr. McCleese came to work for the Town of Manio in nineteen eighty-eight for the Public Works Department, and rose through the ranks to become the Director of Public Works. Mr. McCleese has been a dedicated employee, his hard work and pride in what he does makes him an outstanding person, he has been a member of the American Public Works Association, and served on the Board. He has received his Master Gardener Certification, his involvement with Alliance Club is invaluable, he receives recognition every day from the citizens for his tireless effort to make Manio a nice place to live. He goes above and beyond the call of duty when he's, when he's been doing his job, and, and went the extra mile. Words cannot express his valuable contribution he has made to Manio, and you have to see him in action to know what he does. Thank you so much for your consideration, and sincerely, Bobby Owens, Mayor. Now, uh, Governor Cooper, uh, granted the request of Mr. Mayor, of our Mayor Owens, and members of the Board of Commissioners, and members of the community. So, it is my absolute great honor to present to the family of Mr. James McCleese. We have the Order of the Long Leaf Pine, signed by Roy Cooper, recognizing special competence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of James A. McCleese Senior. And he has presented the Order of the Long Leaf P- Pine, and all of the privileges that go with it. And I'd like to present this framed Order of the Long Leaf Pine to the family of Mr. James A. McCleese Senior. We are thankful to the entire McCleese family, we are grateful for the service of Mr. McCleese, and, uh, we are just so respectful of what he has contributed to the community, so, uh, Mr. Mayor, that, that concludes.
Alright, alright, thanks, James, uh, new business, title be.
Yes, sir.
Appointment, Planning, and Zoning Board, go ahead, James.
Yes, sir, we actually have four agenda items in a row, which are, uh, appointments, some of these are for existing boards and reappointments of existing members. The last of the four is for the, a new board, the Community Police Advisory Board. We're going to go through these, well, there's a distinction between how members are appointed, how chairs are appointed, and whether there's any effect of things like residency or things like that, so it's alright with you, Mr. Mayor, we'll take these one at a time, and we'd have to have separate motions for each, if that's okay.
Yeah, you're there, you go ahead and handle the whole thing, go ahead.
Yes, sir, so, the next one on the agenda is the appointment of Planning and Zoning Board members. In this particular case, the Board of Commissioners appoints members to the Planning and Zoning Board, and they appoint the Chair. In this particular case, we had two members whose terms were expiring, those are members Hal Goodman and Field Scarborough. Both of those members are eligible for reappointment and have agreed to serve. That would be the first motion, should you choose to do so, and the second motion would be to appoint the Chair of the Planning Board, and the current Chairperson is Sherry Wickstrom. So, this would be a two po- this would be a two-segment thing, so should the Board choose to go first to reappoint members Hal Goodman and Field Scarborough, certainly that's up for your consideration.
Yeah, I, I, does the Board feel alright to separate them, or you want to join them? Can I, can we hear from some of the Board members?
I made a motion, Richie, I made a motion to reappoint Hal Goodman and Field Scarborough to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Richie, would you mind adding Sherry to that?
But.
She's the, oh.
I'm gonna do that in the next, in the next motion.
Okay, alright, 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 is there any other appointments?
For the Planning and Zoning Board, those are the two member appointments, and I believe you've got a motion by Commissioner Burke, and a second by Commissioner Mann.
Okay, I didn't hear Eddie's, but that's alright, uh, uh, we have a motion and a second to the Planning Board to reappoint the present Planning Board members, uh, as the, uh, new members, uh, take a roll call.
Yes, sir, Mayor Protem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
Uh.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Alright, the motion cares, doesn't it, James?
Yes, sir. Motion carries, and I guess the second, then the second portion of business for Planning and Zoning Board, should the choose, the Board, the Board may choose from the members of Planning and Zoning Board, the new, the Chair, and the current Chair is Sherry Wickstrom, and is in agreement to serve, should you choose to consider that.
Okay. Richie, you wanna do it now?
Yeah, go ahead and, uh, I'll make a motion to reappoint Sherry Wickstrom as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board.
Alright, is the other, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, this is Christine, I was just gonna second, cause.
Oh, good, okay, uh, there's a motion and a second, we, uh, reappoint, uh, Sherry Wickstrom as Chairman of the Planning Board, uh. Can we, is there any other, uh, anyone like, submitted any other names? Okay, James, go ahead and take a poll.
Mayor Protem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Alright, we have a full majority, I guess we appoint Sherry Wickstrom as Chairman to the Planning Board.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Okay, alright, go ahead.
Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Cemetery Board members, this one's a little bit different, in this particular case, the, the Board of Commissioners appoints the Cemetery Board members, but the members themselves, at their next meeting, would then appoint, would then elect a Chair. In this particular case, we have two members whose terms are expiring, and they're both willing to continue their service. One is the current Chair, Linda Midget, and the other one is member Amy Crawford, uh, both member, both members have, uh, agreed to continue service, should the Board decide to consider that.
Alright, you've heard from town manager, can we get a motion to reappoint or appoint new members for the Cemetery Board? Christine, your Chair, you're, you're represented from the Board, what do you think?
Yes, well, Amy's my sister, um, and Miss Linda, of course, everybody knows who Miss Linda is, and we definitely need her on, um, that Board, so, um, I don't know if it'd be proper for me to, um, make the motion for that or not, but I definitely, um, you know, would like to see them continue serving.
I don't see anything wrong with it, James, James, is there a conflict?
No, no, sir, the liaison may, may do a nomination, should you choose.
Okay, go ahead, Christine.
Okay, then I would, I would like to, um, nominate, or, yeah, uh, nominate, uh, Miss Linda Midget and Amy Effridge Crawford, uh, to serve on the Cemetery Board.
Alright, is there a second?
This is Darryl, I second.
Alright, alright, there's a motion by Christine, seconded by Darryl, we appoint the present members, reappoint the present members to the Cemetery Board, uh. Uh, can I, I will say something in a minute, not now, uh, uh, go ahead, uh, James, take a poll.
Yes, sir, Mayor Protem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
Uh.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Alright, we, it seems to be unanimous, we reappoint the present members to the Cemetery Board, I'd like my comment, if you don't mind, and I'd like, uh, we'll address this to Christine and the other Board members who are not present, but. I've got five sites out there, I don't know if y'all know it or not, and I'd like to say that this cemetery, it within the last two, three, four years, being kept the best it's ever been kept. It's clean, it's neat, I'd like to thank the, uh, town employees for keeping it clean and mode like they do, and I just think it's an exceptional job, I'd like to throw that in, James, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate that.
Alright, move on, James.
Alright, next item on the agenda, this is an appointment, these are for the Board of Adjustment. Now, in this particular case, the Board of Adjustment does have regular members, however, the, our, uh, we, we do have, uh, the need for two alternates, and this Board does, meets very rarely, but with the increased pace of development here in town, it's likely that we will, it's, it will be needed in the future. So, we have, there were, we had applicants who are willing to serve as alternates to the Board of Adjustment, those two members are Ms. Vicky Bassnight and Dr. Kevin Wallace.
Alright, you've heard from town manager on the, uh, members to the appointment to the, uh, Board of Adjustment alternates, uh, can we, are you recommending those two, or did, will somebody appoint, uh, will somebody nominate them? I tell you, it's best somebody nominate these two, if they want to.
I move to appoint Vicky Bassnight and Dr. Wallace to Board of Adjustment alternates.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second, it's Eddie.
Okay, and a motion and a second, uh, by, uh, who made the motion, I can't hear.
Eddie.
Okay, Betty, and seconded by Darryl, alright, we have a motion and a second to appoint the, uh.
Seconded by Eddie.
By, did I say Eddie, okay, by Eddie. I can't hardly hear on this damn thing tonight, I don't know what's wrong, but it's me, I guess, uh, anyhow, to the Board of Adjusted Alternates, uh. Can, take a poll, James.
Thank you, sir, Mayor Protem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
Uh.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Alright, we have full Board approval, uh, to, um, Vicky Bassnight, and who was the other name?
Uh, Dr. Kevin Wallace, sir.
Kevin, Kevin Rawls?
Uh, Wallace, sorry.
Okay, whatever, uh.
Wallace.
Okay, alright, now, here comes a good one, we, uh, go ahead, James.
Yes, sir, this is a new Board, is, uh, uh, of, that was established by the Board of Commissioners, this is the Community Police Advisory Board. This group is to provide advice, feedback, and suggestions to the Manio Police Department, this is really important to that community policing, um, community policing ideal that we have here. Now, according to the, the Charter of this, the Board shall consist of at least three members, and not more than seven, appointed by Town of Manio Board of Commissioners. Members shall serve two, terms of two years, and we encourage representation of all segments of the community. Uh, we did have, we did have a total of seven applicants who expressed interest in being appointed to the Community Police Advisory Board. Now, this is the point where the Board of Commissioners had asked in the past about particular topics such as residency and multiple boards, so. Um, as, as a precursor to presenting this group of seven applicants, of, all, all of whom, whose app, of applications you have seen, there were three issues. First, with regard to residency, but at prior, at prior board meetings, the discussion was, does a person have to live in or out of town? Be eligible for a Board, in the case of the Planning and Zoning Board, our Code of Ordinances requires residency, however, um, other, some of our other Boards not require residency in town. Um, obviously, there's expectation, there's a, a deep link to the town in order to serve on one of those other committees. There's also a new residency issue, issue that just cropped up with one of the members of, of this group of seven who've applied, uh, we have a member, uh, this is, um, this is Mr. Christian Smith. Uh, he, when he called me, he indicated he's only a, he has, he owns. Be eligible for a Board. In the case of the Planning and Zoning Board, our Code of Ordinances requires residency. However, um, other, some of our other Boards not require residency in town. Um, obviously, there's expectation, there's a, a deep link to the town in order to serve on one of those other committees. There's also a new residency issue, issue that just cropped up with one of the members of, of this group of seven who've applied. Uh, we have a member, uh, this is, um, this is Mr. Christian Smith, uh, he, when he called me, he indicated he's only a, he has, he owns property here, and, but he lives here part-time, has background in this area, he has a desire to serve his new community, but he is very transparent and open in saying that he doesn't yet live here full-time, so, that is an issue for the Board to consider in terms of, if we can do so. In terms of living in or out of town, this one, um, this one is an interesting one, because in the Community Police Advisory Board, we only serve within town limits. People who live outside of town limits are served by Darryl County Sheriff's Office, so, someone who's outside of town wouldn't be served by Manio Police Department, and we do have two applicants in this who, um, do not live in town. We've got one that lives in Vista Lake, and one that's in Wengina, just outside of town limits, just, you know, uh, within, you know, matter of hu, you know, a hundred feet or whatever, but we do have two people who are outside of town limits, and therefore aren't served by the Manio Police Department. And that would be, um, Ms. McCoy and Ms. Remagna, so, that, that was an issue the Board asked before about residency. Uh, Ms. Remagna and Ms. McCoy. One is on Wengina, just past town limits, and one is in Vista Lake, which of course is not within town limits. And then, the third issue, in terms of Board service, it's not written into our Code of Ordinances as such, but the question came up, can a person serve on multiple Boards? Now, even though it, uh, even though it may not, it's been the Board's custom not to appoint to multiple Boards, and I can certainly see that in the case of Planning and Zoning Board and Board of Adjustment, while it may not be statutorily prohibited, the idea of having someone serve on Board of Adjustment and adjudicating a decision they made as a Planning and Zoning Board member feels uncomfortable to me. Um, however, if Boards are unrelated, there's a possibility that the Board may entertain a candidate, and in this case, we have a candidate, Mr. Bob Keeney, who currently serves on the, on the Park Board, um, and in that particular case, the, um, uh, Mr. Keeney acknowledged this is a, um, this is a, would be a second Board for him. Uh, he did, when I asked him if he, if the, you know, the Board can consider him for a second Board since they appear to be unrelated, but I also asked him the question, should you have to choose between one or the other, uh, Mr. Keeney indicated, if there's no other person from his community, which is Marsh's Light, on this Community Police Advisory Board, that he would, he would like to serve here, and in looking at the addresses here, it appears that's the case, that he would be the only person from Marsh's Light. So, those are kind of the three issues as you consider this, so, are, the goal, the Charter indicates that we'd have a minimum of three, and a maximum of seven appointees to this Board. You currently have seven applications in front of you, uh, but you're under no obligation to appoint all seven, should you choose to save some slots for the future, as we continue to do outreach in the community to, uh, encourage Board and Committee service, so, it's up to the will of the Board at this point to determine who they would like to nominate for this Community Police Advisory Board.
Well, James, let me ask you a question, uh, now, you said, we've got to have, um, minimum of three up to seven, should we decide if we should have three, four, five, six, or seven first, or not?
It, it's not necessary, sir, because you have the flexibility, the way this is.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, you've asked him a question. All right, uh, everybody's heard from the Town Manager in regards to, uh, Police Advisory Board members, uh, let's have some discussion on this one.
Well, this is Rich, I'll start off. With that being said, there's things that James ran across, like not living in town, and not living in town, on Town Manio, I've knocked off three that fall in that category, which leaves a total of four, which I think might be a good number to start with. That was the flexibility, I guess, to add three more if, if needed. Is that, is that too many, you think, four?
Sounds like a good compromise.
Okay, so, I guess I was nominating them.
Okay, this is Betty, I served on the Police Advisory Committee for, for, for a while, when we had it years ago, and everybody don't always show up, so, four would limit it, and as far as the, um, yeah, we, we had, I think we had about six, and as far as the, uh, ones that's just a rock throw from Manio, because our police department, do our police department respond, have mutually, how far out in the county?
Uh, to be, uh, Mayor Protem Selby, the, the, we, our mutual aid is with the entire county, so while it's, it is, we have responded at least a few times that I know of, last year, to when there was a situ, a situation, um, and also our K-9 has been known to respond, because we have, we're one of the rare agencies that has a, a drug-sniffing K-9, and, and also, uh, secondarily, a searching for, actually found a, a lost child, um, this past year as well. So, um, again, that's, I think that's one of the reasons the Charter doesn't prohibit it, but it is something the Board asked us on, to make sure to bring into your attention, to be totally transparent about it.
Oh, this, Eddie, I'll just make a comment that, uh, I believe Town Manio Police Department has a mile ETJ, where they, um, have a mile outside of town lines, where they can enforce, um, law if necessary. I think all towns in the state have that, uh, one mile ETJ, um, so I would say that if it's somebody that lives within that mile, as well as in the town, it would be likely that the Town Manio would respond to that residence anyway, so they, I don't see a problem with somebody that close for, uh, being on the Board.
And yes, Com, Commissioner Mann, and I know, and we were talking about the extraterritorial jurisdiction, I know that's normally applied to zoning, but in this case, that logic holds true in that it would be more likely we would be responding, say, here on Roanoke Island versus on the beach. Um, and then I can also confirm to your point, that both of the folks who technically aren't within town limits, they would be within that distance, so I can confirm that in both cases.
Thank you.
This is Jason, I think, um, I think I agree with, uh, um, Betty and Eddie, and, um, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with the, the folks that are just out of ti, out of town, I mean, you're part of the community, I mean, where, where are you calling the cops from, uh, you, you know, uh, sitting in your house, or, you know, I mean, walking around town, which is, then you're in town, and it's, um, it's kind of, our town limits are a bit of a, a, um, you know, kind of a wonky gray area at times, and, and these folks are in there, um, and, you know, frankly, uh, one of the names, uh, when I was reading, Stephanie McCoy, um, I don't know her, but just reading folks' resumes, and I, everyone uh, has great things to them, but I thought, man, it, a high school teacher, what a, um, what a good person to have, a part of this group, um, and, and make sure that we've got good relations for, you know, kids coming up, growing up, and, uh, and I'm with the police and part of the community, so, um, you know, that was just a, a quick thought I had on folks out of town.
Jason, I, this is Christine, um, I was, you beat me to it, but I, I do know Stephanie McCoy, I work with her, uh, part-time, and I can't say enough, uh, good things about her as well, absolutely do not have any, uh, reservation at all, she's right outside, uh, the limits by the high school, in fact, um, and so I, I would not have a problem at all, uh, with her being on that Board, she would, she would be a great contributor to that.
All right, uh, James, help me out here, maybe you're gonna handle it yourself, how are we gonna derive it to four, five, six, seven names?
Yes, sir, we, we can be placed on the floor, and they can do any number of names between three and seven, and, and there may be someone about to make a motion here.
Yeah, this is.
I was gonna say, uh, somebody make a motion, or somebody make some suggestions, because we're gonna have to have so many names.
I've got a, this is, this is Jason, I've got, I mean, we've got, we've got seven names, we could go down the list and, and, uh, um, you know, essentially, somebody make a motion on, on all seven, and go down one at a time, and that's gonna kind of weed out how many we have, um, I don't know if we wanna provide a little bit more, um, info on, uh, any and all the folks before we do that, but that's a suggestion on how to decide whether we're doing, you know, three or seven.
This is Eddie, just to make it shorter, I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Bob Keeney, Michelle Lewis, Tim Purdy, Teresa Remagna, Stephanie McCoy, and Warren Martin to the Community Police Advisory Board.
Okay, thank you, Eddie, you guys started off, now we'll know where to go anyhow. You've heard a motion from, um, Eddie Mann, with the names he presented, uh,
Eddie, did you name all seven people?
No, sir, I named six, I didn't name the one that lived part-time in Virginia.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
All right, good, we've got a motion by Eddie, seconded by Darryl, that we accept the names, would you read it one more time, Eddie?
Sure, uh, Bob Keeney, Michelle Lewis, Tim Purdy, Teresa Remagna, Stephanie McCoy, and Warren Martin, I apologize for mispronouncing anybody.
Yeah, that's, that's a good list. All right, uh, would anybody else like to submit a name, we'll be fair about it. All right, James, take a poll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
Okay, it seems to be unanimous, we, uh, have our names for the appointment of the Community Police Advisory, uh, Committee. Thank goodness, that was, that was a worrisome one. All right, uh, go on, James.
Yes, sir. Item number six G on the den, agenda, or, I'm, I'm sorry, item number six F on the agenda, this is zoning district for town-owned property at zero Sir Walter Raleigh. Now, in this particular case, we have, uh, been, we've, of course, annexed the property, and this Board of Commissioners did that, it was already town-owned, adjacent to town, it's been annexed into the town for our own, so it's under our Planning and Zoning rules. Um, a next step was to set the zoning designation, the Planning and Zoning Board has seen it, so the next step in the process, though, would be for a legislative hearing, so that the public can comment on this. So, the action today is not to actually set the zoning designation, the proposed action today is simply to set a date and time for that hearing, so the public can comment on the zoning designation, and the proposal is to have it at the next regular meeting on February third, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, everybody all right with that, I guess? All right, we'll set, James, you just go ahead and handle that.
We need, uh, yes, sir, um, we're, I think we've got a motion from Commissioner Mann.
Okay.
I'll move to set a legislative hearing for zoning designation of the property at zero Sir Walter Raleigh, three, at six thirty P.M., on February third, twenty twenty-one.
All right, is there a second, Eddie's motion?
I'll second, this is Christine.
Okay, Christine, seconded, uh, we have a motion to seconded, uh, take a poll, James.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
Okay, the motion, oh, it's not a motion, the zone, the hearing passes anyhow, so you'll take care of that, James, right?
Yes, sir, we'll make the appropriate notice, noticing, and, uh, post, uh, a proper no, a notice of, of the legislative hearing.
Yeah, okay, uh, six G.
Yes, sir. Item number six G, this is a conditional use permit, this is for the property that was mentioned, uh, earlier in the public comment thing, uh, the next step in this process, very different, you know, this is called, this, the formal name is an evidentiary hearing, but a conditional use permit requires a special kind of hearing, uh, that would be proposed to be held on February third, twenty twenty-one. In this particular case, the Board's action tonight would simply to be set, to set that public hearing, and then staff would take care of notice, this actually has some different notice requirements, and staff would take care of those.
Okay, we don't have to have a motion on this, do we?
We would need, the motion would only be to set that, set that, uh, evidentiary hearing, sir.
All right, let's go, let's go ahead and set the motion.
But, this is Darryl, um, is, is this really necessary for this conditional use permit?
Yes, sir, it's.
I mean, the, 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 uh, the Planning Board already denied it.
Yes, sir, um, according to process, the statutory process, we're, the, the Board of Commissioners, though, is obliged to hear it, and we have to do it in this very formal way, that it's called a quasi-judicial proceeding, and that's why we need to have this evidentiary hearing, uh, that will give folks with standing an opportunity to, to comment on that.
We're making a motion to set the hearing, right?
Yes, sir, and, 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 Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, Town Attorney Gallup, uh, had a quick comment in response to, uh, Commissioner Collins' question.
In addition to Commissioner Collins' question, I wanted to let the folks know who were speaking tonight at public comment, that because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, when they actually make the determination about whether or not to grant or deny the conditional use permit, you, your comments, you need to come back and be under oath, and be able to testify at the hearing. They aren't going to be able to technically consider your comments tonight that were not under oath, so for a conditional use permit hearing, it's quasi-judicial, like Mr. Ayer said, but, which means that the evidence has to be taken, it's much like a court hearing.
All right, uh, would, would these people have to be noticed to come back and be, uh, kind of testify, or whatever you call it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I.
Yeah, well, I guess, now, who will take care of that, us, the, the Town?
Yes, sir, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, our Town Planner, Melissa Dickerson, is appro, approaching the podium, and will make a quick comment on that, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, um, what, ahead of the Planning Board's meeting, we sent notification to adjacent property owners, um, for this and the following matter on your agenda, um, that is how, um, these individuals were alerted to the receipt, the application. Um, now that you have set a date, an additional notice will be mailed to the same adjacent property owners, um, so they will be alerted to the hearing, and, um, a sign will be posted on the property as well.
Okay, all right, and we gotta have a motion, James, right?
This is Rich, I'll make the motion for the CPU.
Okay, Richie, is there a second, Richie's motion?
I'll second.
All right, Darryl, there's a motion by Richie, seconded by Darryl, we, uh, said, we've already set the date, right, James?
Yes, sir, the, uh, the, the motion, this, the proposed, uh, date was February third, twenty twenty-one, at six thirty, at your next regular meeting.
Okay, all right, take a poll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, Iron A. Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
All right, we have, uh, a hearing then set up, and you'll take care of everything, I guess it's two of them, right?
Yes, sir, the next one on the agenda is basic, is the exact same thing, where it's also a conditional use permit, this one's for Manio High School, and it's Fieldhouse, um, this would be the same situation, it's a quasi-judicial hearing, or a quasi-judicial process, and we would need to have a motion to set that evidentiary hearing, uh, at the same time, next, on February third, twenty twenty-one, at six thirty P.M.
All right, would someone make the motion?
This is Chris.
Evidentiary hearing.
Sorry.
For, for Manio High School, that's, on February third.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second, this is Christine.
Okay, Christine, all right, motion by Eddie, seconded by Christine, I guess it was Eddie, uh, that we have a hearing on conditional use permit, would that be the same night, James?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we have three, three hearings next, uh, February, huh?
Yes, sir, that's correct, we'll have one legislative hearing and two evidentiary hearings, they're slightly different processes, but certainly important to hear what the public has to say.
Yeah, oh, yeah, all right, uh, take a poll.
Mayor Protem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
All right, we have the conditional use, the hearing, uh, passes, so, uh, we'll move on to old business.
Yes, sir. Uh, old business, this is item number seven A, and this has been to the Board before, the Board previously held a pub, and they previously held a public hearing on a zoning text amendment that was for walk-up automated teller machines, or ATMs, in the B-two General Business District. In this particular case, the, the public hearing, uh, we did not have comments during the public hearing, but according to the new state law, we also were willing to, or, we had to accept written comments up to twenty-four hours after, and no such comments were received. So at this time, it's up to the, it's up to the Board to determine, um, whether or not they would allow this zoning text amendment. Um, the, the motions in this particular case are very lengthy, we have a, we have a new, a new statute on this, and we have to talk whether to approve or deny, there's some additional statements in here, as to whether it's, you know, consistent with our, our land use plan and reason, and, and related items, so, uh, but the Board has heard this at the prior meeting in. But the board has heard this at the prior meeting in terms of the walk-up ATM as a potential conditional use.
I thought we already denied.
Well, I, I thank you, Mayor Potem Selby. The, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended denial of this, but the, they don't have the last say in this particular case, because this is a zoning text amendment. The Board of Commissioners has the final say, so the Board of Commissioners can determine, can choose to deny or approve, and
All right, can we, can we bring it up tonight, James?
Yes, sir. In fact, that would be, the next step would be to have a motion, and it's, like I said, there's pretty complex motions to approve or deny, but it is the Board of Commissioners, they're the ones who make this determination.
Okay, all right. All right, can we have, how, how word is this? A motion to deny or approve the walk-up ATM machines? Was that all right, James?
Yes, and, and I think whoever chooses to make the full motion, they actually have to say the entire language. We've got some sample motions out there, depending on what the will of the board is.
Yeah, all right.
Reason they denied it?
If it was a denial, it would be the motion to deny.
What was the reason the planning board denied it?
Oh, I'll let, I'll let our town planner address that one. They had, it was, we were actually just going over the, going over the minutes of that, that particular session.
And where exactly is it? I know, I know it's written on there, but where?
The B-2 General District is our primary business district, and the applicant was working along the, there was a particular area along the highway where they were proposing a walk-up ATM. And this is town planner Melissa Dickerson.
And first, Commissioner Mann, I'll clarify that this would, this would be for that entire district and would apply all along the highway in B-2. So, to answer your question, Mayor Potem Selby, the, the planning board cited a number of concerns. The first was that it, they mentioned aesthetics. The second they mentioned was, so these things often look like metal boxes in places with some bollards around them. And the concern was that this year, the new flood damage prevention ordinance that you all passed requires the first floor of every structure to be at eight feet. So, you couldn't necessarily walk up to it, and their concerns was, their concern was that if it's, if it is at eight feet, there's going to have to be some ramping, and it would take up additional space around it. It's not just simply a box in a parking lot or adjacent to a building somewhere. The third concern was that these may attract safety issues, so people at night getting, doing business at the ATM would attract some safety problems. Those were the major concerns that they had.
Thank you.
So, it's just a standalone unit, is what they're proposing, I guess. It's not affiliated with anyone. It is a bank, but it's not on the bank.
That's correct. So, right now, all of the ATMs in town are attached to the wall of a bank, and this would be
Just dropped.
Anywhere.
That was my question, so I'm glad you clarified that. I was wondering if it was, we currently have drive-up ATMs, what the difference was, so thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, sir.
Smaller version of crisis ice or whatever it is, I guess.
Exactly. So, that's the best example that I could give you is what it would, what the ramping and elevation would look like, and that's why the, the ice maker is elevated as well, because that's in a, that was when it was put there in a flood zone, so it was, it was put on decking.
Decking.
Pilings.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Can we have a motion, one way or the other?
Okay, yep. I move to deny the zoning text amendment for the walk-up automated teller machine, ATM, as a conditional use in the B-2 General Business District. The zoning text amendment is inconsistent with the land use plan and the action taken is reasonable and in the public interest, because the walk-up ATM may cause impact to health safety.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion by Betty, seconded by Eddie, that we deny the zoning permit for walk-up ATMs. Any other discussion on this one? All right, James, take a poll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Potem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
All right.
All right, we have it. The zoning text for the walk-up ATM has been denied. All right, are we ready to move on, James?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't have any comments except one thing, and I know you all agree with me just for one reason, is we need to pray for America tonight. It's a sad day that, what has happened, that's all I'm going to say, and what's transpired. We're, got a lot of chaos on our hands, that's all I wanted to say. Betty, how about you?
Just wanted to say, I appreciate Sergeant James Burr, even though he's retired, he's still helping out for the turkey and ham giveaways that he did during the holidays. It was a lot of needy families. Usually he cooked, but of course with COVID, we could not do that, but I certainly feel good about that. And also, we, we will continue to address the drainage problems everywhere, and thank you to Town Manager and to all his staff that came out on the call, when I called about the drainage. I appreciate it. Commissioner Mann, thank you so much. That's all.
All right, talking about Eddie. Eddie, go ahead. Comments?
Oh, the mayor, thank you for coming out, mayor, too.
Again, would like to echo Commissioner Selby and just to commend the Polite Works Department for responding and coming out and watering as best they can, and another looking at some more rainwater this weekend, this week. So, a lot of work ahead of them. I thank them for all their hard work and dedication, and look forward to a long-term solution for that area. That's it, thank you.
All right, Richie?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Darrell?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor, too.
Okay, Christine?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Jason?
Yeah, I, I wanted to thank James and, whatever else is behind it, but, you know, since we got the backlog of 10-year-old applications out on, you know, going back to, I think last year when we were making appointments, you know, we've gotten some really good engagement and some really good applications and resumes, and, you know, that's, that's something to be excited about as we fill all these positions. So, yeah, excited for a lot of the names that I saw, and enjoyed reading everybody's resume and learning about who, who I don't know, who's got in the community here. Everyone's got a different background.
All right, sounds good. Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn? Is anything else come before the board? Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Darrell, a motion to adjourn.
All right, second?
A recess, motion to recess.
Oh, recess, that's right, I forget about the workshop. Recess till the workshop. James will give us the date. Will recess till the workshop? Take a poll, Jack.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. On the motion to recess until January 20th, 2021, at 5:00 PM, Mayor Potem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.